Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember.
It's actually. They actually.
You don't process them.
We. But you don't know if I have it at six, but really.
Good to know, Dave. Thank you for that.
A little processor.
Okay, it's six o'clock and we'll bring our October 19th order and we'll begin with roll call, please.
Walters?
Here.
DeBora?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Move on to approval and agenda, a motion and a second, please.
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
We have three public hearings before us. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the rezoning petition for On With Life. Jenny, when was the notion, the notice published?
September 29th.
Any written comments received for or against the rezoning?
Yes, sir. They were included in your council packets.
Okay. This time, we would request staff to report. Travis?
So for council's consideration tonight is a rezoning, the R1 residential district, the R3 residential district. PNC and staff recommend that this R3 district have restrictions placed on it, limiting to, limiting its uses to independent care, nursing homes, assisted care facilities, independent care facilities, and group homes. The property owner has consented to these restrictions. Essentially what this is, is it's a cleanup rezoning. The current old nursing home, soon to be On With Life facility, has been zoned R1 for some time. And your current code, technically, a nursing home isn't an allowable use in the R1 district. So this is a cleanup rezoning to take from its existing R1 district to a more, or an inapplicable R3 district. And then those restrictions are to ease some of the concerns of rezoning and then somebody else buys the property, they not fill down what this is up, which we don't feel fits the character of that neighborhood quite like a nursing home or a care facility would. On your count plan, this area is currently designated as a civic use, which a care facility falls under, so there is no count plan amendment needed. They have over 50% consenting of the adjacent 250-foot buffer as required by code. And PNC recommended approval with those restrictions. On With Life's engineer and kind of jeans back there, too, so if you have any questions for them, they can ask those as well.
Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the rezoning petition? Seeing no one, I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Absolutely.
Second?
Second?
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet? It's old brain. Go ahead. Anderson?
Yes.
Like to keep you guessing. Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
So we'll move on to 4A1, first reading of ordinance 2023-9700, approving rezoning from R1 to R3 with restrictions. A motion and a second, please.
Second.
Roll call. Go ahead.
Couple of questions. So just around the time, so what have we approved site plan wise for On With Life? And four, have we not?
So you have approved a site plan amendment that took care of some old services, some narrow driveways, that kind of thing. The intent, once this rezoning takes place, is for On With Life to submit a site plan amendment with a record of lot tie that would tie the two parcels together and then would move, because essentially the way that their site plan shows it now is they've got a buffer on the north and west property lines of the smaller parcel adjacent to the L-shaped parcel that wraps around it. So they purchased the L-shaped parcel and they would submit a site plan amendment that essentially moves that buffer to the actual property lines instead of being on the original nursing home parcel.
Okay, so it still seems out of order to do the site plan. I mean typically, and I know this typically doesn't apply here for a number of reasons, right? But we would have a rezoning as part of a sale, site plan. More typical cadence. So you're saying we have the original site plan that is mostly what the final site plan would be? And I don't know if this is an On With Life question.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
That's it then.
Hi, Nicole Neal, double design advantage, 4121, now Northwest Earl Street Drive. So what we brought in originally is more or less to get On With Life into this existing building, renovate it. And then there's just some more like cleanup kind of maintenance items when it comes to the parking lot, those types of improvements. Getting utilities in and run to that building to actually have adequate services. So for example, there wasn't a grease trap today. We need a grease trap, you know, those type of things. So that's to get this property up and functioning. Then purchasing this flag lot and combining was always kind of the intent here. So they were grandfathered in with the R1 because they weren't actually changing the use and they weren't expanding onto this property. So they weren't doing a building addition, they weren't expanding onto parking, they were just doing more or less kind of maintenance things. And then some of those utilities to function today. So then I know what would trigger in the future is if they would, now that they purchased, if they would ever expand onto this building, do more intensive updates to it. That's when we'd come back with a full site plan and really bring everything up. Example, stormwater, all of that up to code. So city standards like detention, things like that. Does that help?
So the reason that it seems out of order is when they approve, when you approve the site plan amendment, On With Life did not own the flag lot around it.
Yeah.
So you, they, they could not act on that land. They were negotiating with the property owner, is my understanding. And then they wanted to get.
I get, get, the renovations to this point are pretty intensive. I mean, and that's a compliment, but what you guys are doing is it's gonna look great and, and a lot of work, I know. So I just want to make sure that the intent of the original plan is following through with where we're at now. And they're, and you know, we've got some papers, so I just want to make sure that nothing has changed with the direction you were going originally. If it's cleanup, if it's, you know, getting it right.
Correct. Yeah.
Where it was not.
Feeling that, like we said, would change is taking that buffer to where we're keeping it with on that current On With Life property. Then once they purchase the flag lot where, instead of having a buffer kind of be in the middle of their property now, we're actually pushing it to the outskirts where it's intended to buffer the R1 and the R3.
Okay.
So.
And then the other question I have is from the city's perspective, we're confident that the drainage concerns are unrelated to the work and the usage net.
Public Works and I visited the site after the PNC meeting. And we believe the area intake that the resident complained about is functioning as it should be. It is in a low spot. I mean, it's collecting a fair amount of water. But Public Works is gonna camera it the next time they have a crew out camering sewers in town. Make sure that nothing's blocking and making sure that pipe isn't collapsed. We're gonna do our due diligence. And then any site plan amendment that would involve additional parking lots, additional buildings, anything like that, as Nicole mentioned, that's when the stormwater would kick in and we would improve that situation.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2024 street repairs project. Jenny, when was the notice published?
September 29th.
Have we had any written comments received for or against the 2024 street repairs project?
No, sir.
At this time, we'd like staff, request staff to provide a report. Travis?
So October 4th, Snyder Associates and city staff hosted a bid opening for the 2024 street repairs project. In our minds, it was a very successful bid opening. It yielded seven bids on a base bid and seven additive bid alternates. We wanted to make sure that if we got good prices, we had options of adding work to that base bid to fit the city's budget. Staff is recommending award of the contract for the base bid and bid alternate D, which is a full width patch and sanitary sewer manhole box out on Tyler Street, Two Brothers Concrete. Brothers Concrete is the contractor on the 2023 street repairs project. They've done pretty good work, as reported on by Public Works. And they are currently in the process of reseating some sparse and replacing some stock to finish out the 2023 street repairs project. They just couldn't get the stuff. We're recommending award of the contract in the amount of $201,531, which is about $30,000 less than our engineers estimate for the base bid and alternate D. Our intent would be to construct the base bid and alternate D, and then the remaining additive bid alternates would wrap into the city's next street repair.
Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the 2024 street repairs project? Hearing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Someone?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Moving on to B1 then, resolution 2023-116, adopting plans. A motion and a second, please.
So.
Any council questions? Then we'll have roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
B2, resolution 2023-117, awarding contract. A motion and a second, please.
Someone?
Second.
Anything from council? Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Vogel? Yes.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Moving on then, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the High Tressle Trail to Neil Smith Trail Connector Project Phase 2. Jenny, when was the notice published?
September 29th.
Any written comments received for or against the Trail Connector Project?
No, sir.
This time, I'd like to request staff to provide a report. Oh, I don't know. Let's go to Travis.
So for your consideration tonight, we, on October 4th, we hosted a bid opening, opened and read bids from 13 bidders on the High Tressle Trail and Neil Smith Connector Project Phase 2. Just as a reminder, this is the project that would go right of way along North Third Street, along the south property of the school building, for the school's property. It would end in the future regional park lot that the city owns. The original engineer, or the engineers estimate was $330,695. We are recommending award of a contract in the amount of $235,524 to Des Moines Dirt Works LLC. They're a grading contractor that Snyder and Associates has worked with in the past. We believe they're capable of performing the work. That'll answer any questions you may have.
Another ringing endorsement. Have, have, Mike, have you worked with them?
No, we have not.
Okay.
But they have, we're going on that, we're committed for.
Okay. 13 bids is a lot.
It is. It was, I would categorize that as probably one of the most successful bids in my time.
Yeah. Okay, so.
And I, I say that because I haven't worked with them directly. We've got several engineers that have, speak very highly of them.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be important that we work with their, their paving subcontractor if they're not like paving subs.
Capability, or capable is usually what are the issues with contractors, so it might be.
Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the Trail Connector Project? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Someone?
Second. No, I'm not gonna second you. Sorry. Did you second?
Yes, sir.
Ron, thank you. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora? Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Moving on then to C1, resolution 2023-118, adopting plans. A motion and a second, please.
Someone?
Second.
Anything from council?
The timing, what are we talking about?
So all of the trees have to be on the ground by March 31st. I, we haven't talked to Des Moines Dirt Works yet. We'll talk to them tomorrow morning, get contracts issued once. As long as you guys approve that contract. But our, our intent was always to have the trees felled this winter. They may clean those trees up at the same time. But then pavement would happen next spring. We've got potential bat habitats along that trail alignment, so trees have to be done first. And we are already in the tree clearing. So I mean, if they wanted to, after the next council meeting, if they wanted to start clearing trees that week, they potentially. So talk a little bit about for the people here and also those watching and, and just as a reminder for us, what, what is this? What kind of application does this have with realignment and, you know, gets us, how far out does this get us to the Neil Smith? Or I'm sorry, to High Tressle? So that, essentially, you are one phase from your connection at the north corporate limits. The phase that goes through the park is the last distance to go to the northern boundary where Polk County is bringing the trail to. And then our project actually includes some of the trail along North Third. Just because of the phasing of it, we wanted to bring our connection out, turn the corner. So there'll be the trail, there'll be the returns, the rounded corners to make that turn, and then there'll be one panel on each side. So that when we do the phase one and the intersection realignment project, our contractor will just come in butt right at the trail. It makes it easier than trying to coordinate a bunch of different grades and making sure everything works. We just build that connection right now and then we just connect to it. Sure. But we're sure, we are slowly getting there. That this is the first step of that. Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Then I guess, let's see, we would go.
We need to do.
We're gonna do roll call now.
Yes, okay. Amy was yelling at me.
Roll call, please.
DeBora? Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
C2, resolution 2023-119, awarding contract. A motion and a second, please. Anything from council? Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Moving on to item five, public comments. This is the time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. If you wish to speak, you should have contacted the city clerk by 6:00 PM. And I understand that we do have a couple of cards.
Yes, Brandon Convers.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just ask you to come forward, Brandon.
Perfect.
And state your name and your address, and please give your comments.
Sure.
By the way, one other thing, we'll limit comments to five minutes, so if you want to keep track, Jenny, thank you. Sorry, Brandon, for interrupting you.
No problem. Right, Brandon Convers, 306 Tradition Drive. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to just take a minute here to speak a little bit on the UTV ordinance, speak of that. As you all know, there's quite a buzz right now on UTVs all over Iowa, it seems like. And we're probably thinking, well, you know, Ankeny got theirs set up over there, so we should talk about it here as well. They just passed their ordinance on July 10th, so about three months in. These UTVs, they, you know, it's, a lot of times called off-road utility train vehicle. So it's somewhat ironic that off-road is used as part of the definition. I feel like that's how it should stay, that don't belong to city streets. I think we should get feedback, Ankeny, from Ankeny Police, folks in the city, in the city there, and see how it's going. And we're only three months in right now, so I think after a few more seasons, it'd be good to find out how that's working for them and if that's been a good decision or a bad decision. My understanding is over there, they've got ordinance for UTVs are allowed on city streets for speeds 35 miles per hour or less. And I know myself, I've been over on northwest, northwest Polk City Drive recently, and that's 55 mile street all the way through from. Or we, let's see, Ordinance Road, Irvingdale to. Or Labor Center there. So I guess I'd say I've seen them on that street. So that's, you know, these things can be safe if they're used properly, but you know, people break laws and that's, that's a safety concern. And I also noticed on the agenda that there was communication from our police, sat in safety concerns of these UTVs. So I think our city council should take that into consideration and keep that as a concern of theirs as well. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. The other person?
Mark Evans.
Mark? Same thing. Mark will ask you to state your name, your address, and then you've got five minutes.
I won't take five.
Well, we appreciate that.
Good evening. My name is Mark Evans. I live at 808 Drive, City. I've been a resident of Polk City for over 20 years now, and I'm here to voice, voice support for the UTV ordinance. Since the state changed the laws of UTVs over a year ago, many cities have passed ordinances to allow the use of UTVs in their cities and towns. Ankeny being the closest and largest town in Polk City, they passed the ordinance this summer. I think they passed, well. As an UTV owner that lives here in Polk City, I'd love to be able to jump my machine, drive down to the square, get something, get some ice cream. Maybe just jump in, leave my house and head north out of town, drive down the road, head to Slater, Huxley, also allow the use of UTVs in there. I've talked to folks who live outside Polk City. I'd love to be able to ride the machine again. There is one item in the ordinance that I think is an issue. Requirement for the Department of Transportation, Department of Transportation rated tires. On June 3rd, 2022, the US DOT issued a letter to various offer associations, tire manufacturers, that stated that the DOT has no federal motor vehicle safety standards that apply to UTVs. And thus the symbol, DOT cannot appear on any UTV tire. And that manufacturers may not certify that such tires conform to any federal motor vehicle safety standard, may be a representation that such tires conform to federal motor vehicle safety standard. With this information, knowing that you won't find UTV tires with the DOT symbol for sale any longer, I would think the DOT may require the ordinance. Again, I would urge the council to pass this ordinance with that change, allow the use of UTVs in Polk City. And I just, you know, I'll say, I know safety is always an issue. I just want to remind everybody that bicycles, mopeds, motorcycles are all allowed in the streets. I'm pretty sure my UTV, 1,200 pounds, got a whole cage, safety, safety harnesses, headlights, brake lights, charge signal. I think it'd be safe to hit towns, but outdoors. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark and Brandon both. I'm sure the council will take your comments under advisement later on in our meeting. So we'll move on to item number six, consent items, and ask for a motion and a second, please.
So move.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBora?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
So we'll move on to item seven, business items. A, first reading of ordinance 2023-9800, adding chapter 74 golf cart regulations. We'll ask chief.
Yes, mayor. So during the September 11th work session, council had asked me produce a option for a golf cart ordinance as well as a UTV ordinance. I separated those out. This is the golf cart ordinance. To do this request, we had to create chapter 74 in the code. Outlined this, essentially, if passed, golf carts could be used in certain streets within the city. But it would not allow for use on any roadways that have a speed limit greater than 25 miles an hour. Additional safety regulations were added with this, in addition to what Iowa code 321, 247 require. Yeah. Do you have any questions, I guess?
Counsel, anything to chief? Thank you. Moving on then, A, I will ask for a motion and then a second, please. Hearing no second, the motion will fail. Moving on then to B, 7B, first reading of ordinance 2023-9900, amending provisions pertaining to chapter 75, all-terrain vehicles, off-road utility vehicles, and snowmobiles. Chief, once again, we'll go to you.
Okay. So this chapter we already had in the code, it included ATVs, ORVs, and. Was that last one?
Snowmobiles.
Snowmobiles, yes, thanks. We, with this proposed ordinance, I was under the impression from the last work session, you wanted to continue not allowing ATVs, but to proceed with UTVs alone. So this ordinance basically is cleaned up and reflects that.
ORV is a transferable term to UTVs?
Yeah, yeah, correct. Just, I guess to clarify, just simplify things by using the UTV term. I would recommend the council continue to not allow the use on city streets based on several safety concerns I have. And recommend you not pass this ordinance.
Will you be the chief?
I just, before we get into the vote part here, I just want to really thank Jeremy and city staff for all the work that you've put into and helping us understand golf carts, UT, like all the variety out there. I feel like also there was a very objective approach taken to this, that obviously if we would enact this, it creates more work for you, more challenges for you, more hazards in the community, but had several conversations, got really good. The information that I was looking forward to help make a good decision. And I will say, you know, the mom of the group, the crabby, whatever you want to call it, I, coming into this with both golf carts and UT, you know, it was kind of like fun versus safety hazard, like that's a hangup for me. As we've gone through this exercise and I've learned a lot more about each one, I think golf carts, yeah, I don't think I can, that's, that's one that I feel comfortable saying. Too many safety hazards there. I've gotten to, I would say, a maybe on UTVs. So like I said, I really appreciate helping with the understanding. I've had a lot of conversations out there. And knowing what Ankeny has done, I know somebody mentioned that they just put it into place there. And I'm, I'm a little more inclined to revisit in the future, continue learning more, continue seeing. So I typically don't like to kick things down the road, and I was on board with bringing an ordinance forward here. I think the ordinance has a good, a lot of, a lot of good parameters in here, and again, thank you for all the work that you've put into that. And like I said, I've, I've gotten to a maybe on this, where some of those safety concerns are still being there. But I think with time, we might be able to learn even more from Ankeny, that's recently announced.
So you put together both of these and did not mention anything one way or the other on golf carts you're recommending not approval here?
Oh, yes. I guess I skipped over that. I would, on the golf cart one, I would also, but I do not recommend that chapter 74 be adopted. And same goes for this chapter 75.
So from my perspective on these, obviously I would have liked to see a vote on the first one, but I understand that safety legitimate concerns here. I do kind of go along with the point of, and the tire piece notwithstanding, if Ankeny can figure this out, but I think kind of be. can figure this out, but, uh, I think kind of be, should be in that vein, most of this is a small-town amenity, um, and drawing regulations that apply to the, uh, larger audience based on the exception, misuse, those things, is not a good practice, um, but moreover, for me, this is something that I've heard from enough people that want to have it, and I think we've got, uh, typically, uh, two sets of decisions to make, there are right things to do, there are long-term benefit things to do, and those should be done based on that criteria alone. I think there are a lot of other decisions that are, do fifty-one plus percent of the people want it, and that's, there's, there's a gray area, there's discretion area, and I've heard from considerably more people, and it was one-to-one tonight, but, uh, a lot of messages, a lot of conversations, uh, been wanting to have this conversation appear for a while, but it's been overwhelmingly, uh, uh, in favor of, uh, a version of this, and, and if we were to pass it, I think amending things as we see the use, um, twenty-five miles an hour as noted is ten less than what Ankeny's done for a while, uh, so again, that, that's, that's where I'm at, uh.
Well, I, on the other hand, have not heard from anybody other than the gentleman tonight that was in favor of it, anybody that has contacted me or I've talked to doesn't think they belong on the roads, and I feel the same way. A bit of history, twenty years, twenty years or so ago, we allowed this, allowed snowmobiles and ATVs, there wasn't near as many, the UTVs, whatever you want to call them, as there are now, they were out there, but there wasn't near as many, and it was abused. They got off the, we gave them a designated trail to come through town, they got off the trail, we're down in the square, two o'clock in the morning, cutting donuts, doing all kinds, it was abused, it didn't work, and therefore, I, I don't know, I'm not saying that will happen again, but I'm saying the potential's there, and, uh, let's face it, one of our biggest problems in Polk City right now is traffic, period, and I just don't feel comfortable adding more vehicles to that.
Anything else?
Are we doing anything with this, so, snowmobiles, under circumstances, no changes to what current municipal codes?
Correct, so, certain amount of snow on the roadway.
All right, so, so no change for snowmobiles?
Correct, yeah, it was already in that same chapter.
I want to start out a little bit of a story, so this is, this is kind of near and dear over the last few years for me, I was, I've been a hard-nosed whole time, um, and a couple of years ago, my niece was driving, this is in the country, this is in Benton County, uh, driving a, it was a four-wheeler, so again, not a UTV, just bad decision, uh, you know, probably my brother should have watched it a little bit, watched her a little bit better, too, but she picked a friend up, uh, they subsequently got hit on a county road, and the friend passed away. Um, she was hurt, you know, all this and that. I'm not comparing this to that, but the fact that I, I just, I, I need some safety here, and I would get behind, as Mandy mentioned, Ankeny's going to have a season full of, of data that they're going to be able to provide us, that data will allow at least myself to feel much better and make an educated decision than just an interim decision on this. So what I'm saying is, when they bring it back up, I am happy to revisit this based on, if they say, if Ankeny says it's safe, they have many more police officers, many more regulations, probably a lot more eyes on the streets. If they think it's good, I, I, I would be way, way more inclined to say, it's, I'm okay with that, I did my due diligence, and I can kind of rest assured that it didn't be other people that were on the, uh, the UTVs. That's my thoughts. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, just doesn't feel right without having some data. First person gets hurt, I'm going to feel it right then, right? So that's where I'm at.
I agree with you, Dave, I don't, I don't want that on my shoulders to make a decision to allow this and have somebody hurt.
Carla or Mike, do you guys have any opinions from public works or public safety standpoint?
Um, I agree with Chief Sefers' recommendations, um, but I like the idea of revisiting it and see how it goes in other communities near us. Golf carts, part no, too slow, tires, it's wet, they're slick, just had five golf carts crash at the golf course a couple of weeks ago on grass, so it'll hurt when you hear about it, but, you know, we'll be the ones to take care of, so.
Yeah. No.
Mike, did you have any thoughts back there?
Trying to get out of the way. I was listening back there. Um, no, as far as, you know, posted speed limits, those type of things that we've been talking about, um, uh, they're all posted, they've got to maintain those, right? So you're asking, what was the question, I apologize, what I, what my thoughts were about these? The UTVs? Okay, um, I come from a farming background, we use them every single day, we go into town to fuel up, we cruise them around the lake, responsible people are responsible, some aren't, so that, I'm falling more in the personal aspect there, but, uh, that's where I land on it. Um, I know we're different, we're not as rural as we're, I'm talking about, but, uh, responsible people are going to be responsible, so.
Okay, let's move on then, and let's ask for, to-
Well, real quick, so, we're not allowing questions, I just want to state from my perspective, I, I know we've got a flow to consider, I, I still do not agree with our approach here that people that are going to talk have to put in, say their five minutes or less before, so, I wish you could answer the question, I'm not in control of the meeting, I, I think there should be public dialogue in these meetings, I'm disappointed that we can't have that, and we have an overly onerous in my head, nothing against you, Steve, you're conducting a meeting, and, and I get the legalities of it, I just, I hate, we're, we're a tiny town, and if we can't allow people to converse back and forth, what are we doing? And so, tangential to the issue here to some degree, and I already said my piece on how I feel about it, it's just frustrating that we've got, that, yeah.
I'll jump on that and say, again, I'm, I'm more of a, you know, process, but, like I said, I, I, I went from a probably not to a maybe, I've had a lot of conversations with people about this on both sides, I've had a lot of people in the middle that said, you know, their, their reaction was just, but why? Um, so regardless, I encourage people to reach out to us, so, you know, whether your comments were formal, whether they were in the public comment section, whether you have questions, um, I'm definitely open to continue hearing more about this and continuing to have those conversations, because in the end, um, again, I'm a little more conservative, but, um, don't want to be overly restrictive if we can really do this in a safe manner. Again, just needs more time and more, more information, so keep the dialogue coming.
I'd just like to say that I agree with Rob. I know we don't want a back-and-forth dialogue, we haven't had any of that for a long, long time, I'm not too concerned about it, but most of the time when people have a question, they just want a clarification on something that was said, and I think it's pretty sad when we can't answer.
Okay, let's go on and move this forward, so, um, we need a motion and a second on B, which is first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ninety-nine hundred, amending provisions pertaining to chapter seventy-five, all-terrain vehicles, off-road utility vehicles, and snowmobiles. So I'll ask for a motion and a second, please.
Motion approval.
And a second. Hearing none, uh, motion-
Can I have a question before you put it?
I haven't said it yet.
Yeah, but you were going to, and I'm not sure if I had, if I could make a different motion to say we revisit.
You can always bring it back.
I know, but I want to make sure we're accountable for that, in a certain amount of time that we're not kicking it down the road.
Then, that's a different motion, that's a motion to defer the vote on it until a date certain, or a motion to table the action, and then when you're ready to bring it back, you'll have to take it off the table and then vote on it. So if you want some, you want to make sure that it is brought back at a certain time formally, then those are your two options.
So that's, that's why I want to close it quite yet, because I want to make that motion, or do I have to wait until he's done?
I've already made a motion.
I know it's procedural, but, okay, I'll just leave it there.
Okay.
So you've got a motion, so ask for a second.
Correct, I already did ask for a second, and hearing none, I have not heard a second on B.
Then the motion to approve the first reading fails.
Fails, yes.
If you want to bring back another motion, then I think you still could bring a motion to bring it back, it's kind of out of the ordinary, but bring it back at a later date for direct staff to do that at some, you don't have to formally, yeah, you do not need to formally do that.
I think we have people that will hold us accountable today.
Okay. So hearing no second on B, motion fails. Moving on to C, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighty-one hundred, amending chapter one fifteen cable television regulations. Chelsea?
Um, for the council's consideration this evening is an ordinance pertaining to the city's cable television regulations, chapter one fifteen. Um, the only change to this chapter is underlined in the ordinance, it just says, grantee shall install utility vaults rather than pedestals in all instances where such installation is possible. Um, we've been having some correspondence back and forth with MediaCom on, um, them wanting to install pedestals, so we needed to get this in the ordinance, so that is, it is kind of just a clean-up matter, but that is the only amendment to the ordinance for this evening.
Okay, so we will ask for a motion and a second, and then any further discussion?
Someone?
Second.
Roll call, please.
DeVore?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Moving on to D then, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ninety-six hundred, amending chapter sixty-nine parking regulations, winter parking, so ask for a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Anything, counsel? Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Moving on then to E, third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ninety-four hundred, amending provisions pertaining to liquor licenses and cigarette and tobacco permits. I'll ask for a motion and a second, and then any discussion?
So move. Second.
Roll call.
DeVore?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item F, third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ninety-five hundred, amending provisions pertaining to fiscal management, motion and a second, please.
I will.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll ask for roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Item G, August twenty twenty-three Snyder and Associates Engineering invoicing the amount of ninety-five thousand five hundred four dollars and twenty-five cents. Motion and a second, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Same.
DeVore?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, reports and particulars, we'll begin with, uh, staff, anything from staff?
I have a few things.
Sure.
Um, Firefighters Association pancake breakfast is Saturday, it's eleven eleven, a drive-through in front of the station due to remodeling issues, um, and then I just wanted to acknowledge, um, my staff and the, the police department, um, for a, for a call that we had recently, um, a cardiac arrest, so if I have a few minutes to do that, I'd like to do that. Uh, crews were called at twelve o'clock on nine-ten for a sixty-five-year-old male to witness cardiac arrest, when our ambulance arrived on scene, Officer Iker and DNR Officer Brown seen in CPR, they delivered one shock with their AED, EMS took over CPR, established airway and shock two more times. After the third shock, patient got a pulse back, was found that the patient suffered a heart attack, three stents were placed, patient was discharged in good condition. The ambulance crew was firefighter paramedic Alyssa Pury, firefighter paramedic Nathan Reeves, the additional crew that showed up, firefighter paramedic Riley Nagle, who ended up assisting during transport, firefighter EMT neighbor God drove the ambulance. I was there, and, um, firefighter EMT McKay helped provide man apart. Special thanks and a good job well done by Officer Matt Iker and DNR Officer Jeff Noon was also a part from Officer Alyssa. Thank you.
It's great news.
It is great. So just to call out the, the first two titles, because I know we've had approvals for paramedics, but having two paramedics tonight say this as a former EMT saved that person's life, uh, along with the timing, it survived, so, uh, worth every penny.
And it's, can't put a price on it, that's amazing, that's amazing, we can't put a price on, on that, that's what.
Uh, any other staff? Hearing none, Chelsea?
I do have two things, um, so I just wanted to let the council know that the trail section that you have planned and specifications for this evening, um, we did receive that seventy-five thousand dollar land and water conservation fund grant, it's been about two years since we received that, but, um, that will certainly help fund that project. And the second one tonight is Cody Olson, our building official, he's not here this evening, but I just, I wanted to throw out a big kudos to him. Cody was hired on September twenty-fifth as, uh, the city's first building official, he's been tasked with, in the first year, he has to pass four exams, uh, to become a certified building inspector, and within his first two weeks, he passed his first exam, so if you see Cody, please tell him, congratulations.
I might get his name right every time.
Anything from the council? Uh, I do have a couple of things, uh, first, there's a forum on October twenty-fourth, uh, sponsored by Go Polk City for our council members, uh, we have, uh, three seats open and five people running, and then opt, that is at Luena from six to eight PM, and then, uh, on October twenty-fifth, the next day, the next night, rather, we'll turn right around and have a forum for the, uh, candidates for North Polk School, so I would encourage everyone to show up, and I'm speaking to the camera now, because the facility holds a hundred and eighty-five people, I believe, and it'd be a shame not to fill it, so, uh, I have that. Last week, I attended the groundbreaking for the Des Moines Airport on behalf of Polk City, many of you know, I know the council certainly does, that we, uh, uh, contributed some funding for the, uh, Des Moines Airport, and it was great to have that, uh, groundbreaking, I think that the, uh, that project is going to increase the amount of traffic in and out of the Des Moines Airport, which I think will be good for everyone who has to get up at four o'clock in the morning to try to catch a flight out of Des Moines, if you wonder. Um, I attended the Iowa Trail Summit, uh, last week, I've attended that for a couple of years, uh, obviously, one of the reasons I go is because, uh, the discussion sort of is wrapped around trails, and anybody who knows me knows that trails are important to me, and we're, um, beginning the first phase of a trail project now, and hope to have the rest of the pieces in place, uh, as we go forward. I don't think that, uh, I can underscore the amount of conversation during the Iowa Trail Summit on how having a trail through your community changes the whole dynamic for your, for your community, particularly economic development-wise, and, uh, I'm very much in favor of economic development, so it was a great, uh, thing to attend. Um, Fall Fest was just held, that, um, that was just a great event from what I saw, uh, down here on the square, and so I want to thank everybody who volunteered for that and city staff as well, and then finally, this is just kind of a- And then finally, this is just kind of a kudos for all those people, and I'm speaking to the camera now again, who contributed to our community visioning exercise that we did back in twenty nineteen. Chelsea and I were both contacted by the Trees Forever organization. We've both been interviewed about community visioning, because we have a number of success stories, and the Trees Forever organization is coming to town, and they're going to do a video on the, um, successful community visioning, uh, projects. So, uh, thanks to everybody who contributed to that, including members of the city council. So I know I rarely have things to report during my time, but I had a whole list tonight, so thank you for letting me do that. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. We are adjourned until October twenty-three, thank you, everybody.